All the meeting order at four o'clock comprehensive plan review committee. We heard from Jake or Carl? Nothing from Jake? Joe, did you bring a printed agenda for us? We have the minutes from the last meeting, I know Wendy sent them out.
I think that was Tracy, wasn't it me? Because I wasn't sure I was the secretary.
There's some rule you can't see?
No, I just cleared it with Joe. He said, sure. So I didn't know if I wasn't a voting person, you know? Scribe, yeah.
Alright, well, since we don't have that, we can wait. Let's just keep going. Let's just start going through the chapters.
Do you want to do that, Joe, and I'll get started?
We're just going to discuss your chapters, yeah?
I have it on my phone, so.
Wendy's all over it. So, economy.
So, the economy section, we've gone through, it went to the Board of Selectmen, went back, we had a few rounds. I think it's ready to go.
Anyone opposed? Or any additional comments?
Were there, I have a question. I didn't see the film, but would the Board of Selectmen, did they have any comments or changes or additions that were substantial?
I didn't get any from them. I got some.
Sam did originally, right?
Yes, originally, that was back in.
Right, so second revision.
Oh, that was the second homeowner.
Their silence, we will assume is their acquiescence. It seems to work pretty well with the other government parties.
My initial reaction was to just send it off to the Board of Selectmen, but I thought, no, let's get this from, let's get this from you. That you're ready to send it off to them.
Well, we've already sent it to them twice, right?
This will be the first, this will be the second time they've seen this.
Okay, yeah, so that should go.
It's an important.
Do we need a motion, or is anyone opposed, I guess?
I'm seeing all the edits that.
Well, we'll still have another bite, right, when it comes back if we need.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like.
I think I got them all.
I think you did too.
Chair cast one with no opposition. Housing.
So, housing also has gone to the Board of Selectmen. I only had comments from Councilor White on that, or Selectman White on that, and some of them I incorporated into this, and some of them were, you know, like, just, she asked a question, it talks about, you know, being part of the Western Mountain. The nonprofit that's dealing with housing, and her comment was, have you talked to them? And the answer to that is, I've had a, you know, casual conversation.
You mean Paul Peck and all those guys over at John Bopray?
And they said, we'd love to have Rangel, right? It would be awesome to have Rangel.
We just put it here as have a discussion on it, right? It was an action item, right?
It was, it was that, it was in the plan as a subject.
Was that the High Peaks group? Is that what it is?
Well, High Peaks is trails.
Okay, so what is the name of it? I just want to get it in the minutes correctly.
So, Western Maine Mountain Housing.
Yeah.
That's Paul Peck, John Bopray, they're trying to do a facility over there.
Caravan.
Is that what they talked about in that meeting that we went to, the regional meeting over there? Yeah, I think so.
We touched on it, of course, housing with them is this big a deal as housing is here.
Well, it's even bigger over there because they don't have.
We did talk with them, we talked with them when we were at that meeting, right? And they are, they are a fully functioning operation, they just haven't added us to it.
Yeah, they haven't pulled off a project yet, but they're, they're up and running. They had $300,000 grant from somebody.
And they, I saw, who is it, Mark Green? I saw him and Paul, they were at a conference in November, the Skoggin Valley Conference at Black Mountain. And I saw him there, and I asked him, and they said, we'd love to have Rangel. Is that an official meeting? No.
Right.
More decisions, no.
No, we just put it in there. What does that mean? What does that mean, we'd love to have Rangel? I mean, is it, you know?
I mean, collaborate with that.
We'd like to talk.
So, I mean, is this, you know, the Board of Selectmen that sends a delegate over, or is it, I guess it's like, what, maybe?
Well, I can explain it. So, the Western Maine Housing Group, they are just a group of concerned citizens that bonded together, actually got a grant from, for $300,000, I think, out of the TIF monies from the county.
Right.
To get going, to try to solve some of the problems. They tried to do a facility down in Kingfield.
What does it mean, we'd love to have Rangel?
So.
What does our next, what does it mean for us?
You mean for the comp plan?
For.
No, she means, we'd love to have, we'd love to have us participate with them. John Bopray, John Bopray's talked to me a couple times about it, said, you know, we'd love to have you guys help us with our efforts to try to solve it. We're trying to solve the same thing. Maybe we can collaborate on projects.
Is it coenforcement, is it town manager?
I'm gonna think it's the town manager.
Okay.
I would think, you know, reaching out, having an initial conversation.
Okay.
But there's going to be funding, funding's involved.
Okay.
Well, they don't have, they don't have anybody on their board that's from town government.
Well, for our, for our purposes here, that would just mean Comprehensive Plan Committee, like, would put in an actionable step, maybe saying, you know, let's continue the discussion of the Western Mountain Housing thing.
Right.
That's all we care about right now.
Exactly, that was the, yeah, exactly Wendy. That was kind of the point of my question. It's like, alright, well, what, what do we do with this then, in relation to the?
I think all we're saying is, is that it's something we should.
They'd love to have us, but.
Well, I mean, all we're saying is, is something to have a conversation about further.
Right, the, the plan is focused on, you know, with affordable housing comes some oversight. In terms of who's moving in, and their income guidelines, and all of that stuff, and developing new is done differently. And so, they would just, rather than Rangel going out and creating a housing authority, and, you know.
Don't do it in a vacuum, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, get, you know, Rangel's not big enough for a housing authority, and, and, so, yeah, just.
Yeah.
And Paul served on Merida, and he's got a lot of background in this, so.
He's been.
He's been doing it. Not always the easiest guy to get along with, but he, he's a damn attorney.
So, we've had a lot of back and forth on this one also. I mean, I think this too is ready for the Board of Selectmen.
I agree, we've seen it eight times.
Anyone opposed to move it to the Board of Selectmen? Saying none, chair cast one, move the select one. Okay, public facilities.
Public facilities, and this is based, I think, on both comments from Cindy and Wendy. I need a little more help from the town. So, you'll see that there's still some comments in your copy, because I need the town to answer these questions, like, you know, does the police department actually use space over there?
No, I've started that. I've just sent it to you. That's been stricken in my graph. It should be a list of fire department equipment, I agree with that.
So.
Right, yeah.
So, it's not, it's not quite there, but it's also not, it's not substantive stuff, you know, like, the request was to have a list of equipment for public work. So, not controversial stuff, not, you know, but it's just, it's just not done yet.
But it's not much.
What's the timeline on getting that done?
Three or four items, probably next week.
Okay.
Yeah, we can look at it, yeah, just send an updated copy.
So, the only.
Oh.
Yeah, go ahead.
And then, I also have in the recommendations, and I can't remember whether this was Wendy or Cindy, but there was that, so I'm on page 11. That 1B and 1D are pretty much the same thing.
I think that was my observation, is like, they seem to have the same outcome.
So, I'm suggesting that we eliminate D. And then, let's see, oh, and then that's, D is just B. And I added a new one at the end on page 12. And this is, and I, it is periodically review the cost sharing amount for services provided to the various plantations to ensure that the amounts are fair and equitable.
Well, I think that opens a can of worms, but it's up to you.
It does.
Go ahead, Chris.
Go ahead, Cindy.
I, I just, it, it comes up all the time. I mean, you know, it's through the Board of Selectmen, I think it's something that's ongoing. I don't, I mean, don't you, Joe? It comes up with transfer station, with, of course, the fire department piece. I mean, I think what's been missing is probably a dialogue, including the plantations.
I tend to agree with Cindy on that.
Yeah, and I think, you get into the whole fair and equitable, there's, there's a constant pull of public facilities and services. Is a $250 share from Sandy River Plantation towards a $250,000 budget to run the park? And fair and equitable, probably not, but is the town of, its plantation of Sandy River, in all the years I've run their town meeting, ever going to get more than $250? Probably not. So, I don't know if we want to get into the whole fair and equitable thing, because I don't think it's ever going to be there. I think, I think we just need to just, we're going to continuously build, the town of Rangel is going to continuously build for the hydrant and the fire protection and those pieces of services as what we determine based on our rubric that we use, and.
Can I ask a question? Can I ask what's going to, why would we not put fair and equitable? What's the problem with using that type of language, in terms of sharing costs with the plantations?
I don't even think we need that whole point in there, that's fine.
Well, I was suggesting.
Why wouldn't we want that in there?
Because it doesn't matter.
Why, it doesn't matter?
How many of those town meetings you sat through? They don't make.
I don't even care how many, it's not how many I've sat through. No, I'm talking about the future, I'm talking about the future. Whether the past, it didn't happen, I mean, the thing about complan's is that we should be, I won't say aggressive, but somewhat assertive in terms of these types of issues that have lingered, or have, have, you know, through lack of any reason, I don't know why, have not been addressed in the past. Would we not want this to be considered in the future?
Well, I think, Steve, what Cindy was saying is that it happens on a regular basis.
They have a quarterly meeting of all the selectors.
So, it's, it is on, it is ongoing.
Yeah.
I don't think there's anything wrong with it being on the radar, but I think, I think what, what Chris is talking about is, is, that's a donate, I think it's considered a donation for, you know, for common, for common services, or that the plantations benefit from. Could be fireworks, could be, the town park is, is a biggie, because it is an expense, but it's a, it's a donation. It's, and I don't know, Chris, maybe you, I don't know if there's any other lens with which to present it to the towns such as Sandy River. You've been there.
Yeah.
I, and I, and I'm not sure that would be included in with these
I guess the question.
Shared services, I don't.
Yeah, if you guys want to leave it in, I'm not going to die on that hill, but the question of services, there's a lot of services that are quote unquote provided, that are accessible to these, to the plantations, that we do not bill anything for, and have no way to try to legally bill for.
Right.
I think the only reason we're able to bill for what we are is the school services, because it's set by the RSU agreement, and the fire services, because it's set by that fire service contract. But we can't bill for any of the other services that are provided. Forty-nine, forty-eight percent of the library budget is paid out of the town of Rangel, it's not pro-rata on the same basis out to the plantations. We don't do anything with those other pieces. So, if you guys want to leave it in, it's fine, I just think, I just think, if, if the plantations at some time want to argue something's fair and equitable, based on what we've done with the hydrants and that stuff, then I think you just, you've provided a conduit for that.
I mean, do you want to put a period after?
Can you read that again, Donna?
Periodically review the cost sharing amounts for services provided to the various plantations to ensure that the amounts are fair and equitable.
I don't have anything.
The residents of Rangel.
I think that's good. We have to add.
I couldn't hear Steve.
If Chris is worried that it opens the door for renegotiating by the plantations, you can simply add fair and equitable to the residents of Rangel, or identify the fair and equitable aspect to Rangel's taxpayers, who are funding that primarily.
That's fair. I, I appreciate that, Steve, I think that.
Yeah, because I think, I think.
Fair and equitable to the citizens of Rangel.
Fair, yeah, because I think.
To the burden, the tax burden of the citizens of Rangel. Thank you, Steve, that's a good amendment.
Yeah, it is, because I, I would agree with the fair and equitable judgment piece that that clause generates, because it would be from our perspective.
And it should be.
Yeah, and it should be, because I think that. The only thing that other caught my eye on that there was on page five about the paramedic. The evaluation of services for paramedicine, the value of cross-training between firefighters, and the cost of providing all services. I guess I'm confused with that. Is that implying that we're thinking about taking on the paramedicine? Because we've been there before, and it didn't work out well.
Yeah.
It's worked out a lot better under contract. So, I, again, as you know, we talk about this as a living, working document. I don't know if I want to shoe open another thing to add to our already potential three quarters of a million dollar budget, it then goes to 1.25.
I don't think this automatically causes any budget change or anything like that, it's a suggestion to study it, to take a look at it. See if, see if anything needs to be adjusted or not.
I mean, I'm fine with the whole sentence up until, and the cost of providing all services, more of like, the valuation of considering levels of right as paramedics, and the value of cross-training between firefighters and paramedics. And I actually think it actually should be law enforcement in there too.
Yeah.
Are you reading on page six, Chris?
It's five on mine.
Okay.
So, it's right, it's the last paragraph before health services.
And I'm looking at that last segment of that sentence derived from a meeting where you talked about checking in, the committee talked about checking in on all contracts and services. Everything, everything that the town does, you're checking on that periodically, systematically.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I, I think.
I think that was the genesis of that.
Well, the way it reads there implies to me that it's kind of pushing towards bringing the paramedic thing back in-house, and we're already cramped on space now, and economy of scale, and the dual coverage, I know up at Saddleback, if we've got something going there and something, then Phillips comes up, we would, you know, we would lose some of those things, and I just think it's important to, I believe in the cross-training piece 100%, and I actually think it also should have law enforcement on there, because I know the chief years ago, the previous chief, and Jared did some training, because that way, sometimes they're first on scene, and that way they could try to save a life. So, I mean, I'm fine with that. I think if we make a separate sentence that says, maybe not in there, but somewhere else that says, back into this, we've got this, this nine, chapter nine, review the fair and shop, provided various plantations, amount of fair and equitable, and review of all contracted provided services, or something to that effect, almost tie it into a, that number nine point about, because I'm not opposed to, you know, contracts get stale, sometimes it gets automatic. I just dealt with one out in Chicago for my kid's condo, they were paying ridiculous amount for rubbish, and I renegotiated it down 70% because nobody had paid attention, and just ratchet it up. So, so I'm a big fan of, you know, those getting reviewed, and I feel like that's almost on the fiduciary duty of the town manager to be reviewing those with the board. So.
So, should it be the services?
So, this is, so what I'm saying is.
Public safety services.
What I'm saying for that paragraph, it should say, paramedicine, the value of cross-training between firefighters, law enforcement, and paramedics.
I'm sorry, Chris, I was on, I was on that number nine. Say it again?
So, the paragraph before health services, I would say. The evaluation should be all levels of service provided, such as paramedicine, the value of cross-training between firefighters, law enforcement, and paramedics, or public safety officials, however you want to do it. If you use police department before, whatever you use for the wording, so it's consistent.
Yeah.
And then I would strike the, and the cost of providing all these services, and I would focus that part back on your number nine action.
I see, okay.
That's all, I'm just seeing, it seems like, it's almost presenting an action thing when we're really trying to just tie, tie up those little pieces. That's just my only note on that.
Right, no, I think, and, and the reason I think that this should be in the plan, even though we may not do it, is that in the event that public safety, you know, because world health is a big deal in Maine, and there's a lot of hospitals closing, and, and so.
Right.
If money becomes available for training and stuff, maybe, may, maybe, and maybe not, you want to take advantage of it. And if it's right here in your plan.
Then you got a way to do it.
Yeah, you're validated with that too.
Yeah, so, like I said, I'm fine with leaving the training part, but I'd like to move that other part under the action.
Okay.
Does anyone oppose to that?
No, I'm not opposed to it, but I think, I don't know if my suggestion counters what you just suggested. So, I, I think I wrote you a little page of notes, and I had said, under public facilities, the last recommendation would be page 12, since the subject of town-run EMS was discussed at the top of page six, we should add something like, conduct a fiscal and functional analysis of a town-operated EMS department. The evaluation should include the levels of service provided, such as paramedicine, the value of cross-training between firefighters and paramedics, and law enforcement, and the cost of providing all these services. And it really just means, like, look at it, you know?
I agree with Wendy on that.
I wouldn't be opposed to that if we also put it in with the police department and the fire department. Because as you know, I've brought up that several times about the whole. I don't think we did a full evaluation when we had the two, or down to the last two, when the two employees left. We kind of looked at the sheriff thing, but we didn't really flex it. So, I'd like something in there that says if we ever go that route again, that we can evaluate all our public services. So, I'm fine if you want to put in EMS, but if we're going to put in EMS, let's put in the fire and the police as well, because who knows what's going to happen over time? There's a lot of things going on, especially with the school districts right now. There's quite a bit of mess going on, side 58, they're very fractured. And there's going to be more and more talk, I think, of regionalization of things, whether, whether we end up, I mean, I think, I think Phillips is in real trouble from a tax base, and a lot of things, that they're going to either get absorbed by another town, or they're going to have to, they're going to have to collaborate on such things, which could be an opportunity for us too, where we say, okay, you know what, we maybe can provide Phillips' contracted services for a couple of these things with our staff that we have, or adding another things, we've got a good team. So, I, I think, I think if we're going to do that, like Wendy said, I would like to have it, where we put in all public safety services. Is anyone opposed to that?
I'm not opposed to that.
I'm not. I, I found it very confusing as to why we were focusing in on EMS. I found it very odd, because we had a presentation here during the budget from North Star on how they, how they treat, you know, how they place people within Franklin County, for instance. And they, they're more experienced.
There was a couple situations that happened in the past year, that, and I think that was more of a staffing issue, in relation to the company versus that, but
Yeah.
We got the discussion going.
But it's like, they don't just have EMTs up here, they've got paramedics, because of our distance from the hospital.
Right.
And so, to, to reverse that somehow, I ought to, I mean, our firefighters already have incentives in the contract, financial incentives to become EMTs. I'm not sure if paramedicine's in there, because that's like a career. That's like a whole other matter. EMTs, paramedicine, completely different.
Yes, absolutely.
I think, I think it still comes back, I think you're bringing up some great points, Cindy, but I think if we can, if we, if we put in there that we can evaluate all those things, we cover it.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think what's important is the criteria, is if we go back to the core thing, and this goes back to the very first day we were sitting here. And Steve, Steve brought up the part, it's like, you know, we've got more of an elder population than we've had before, and that we are really kind of weak in the overall medicine piece. So, I think we need to make sure that when we're evaluating any things, we're also looking through that eye of what is a highly skilled person that we can get in the shortest amount of time to respond to our citizenry?
I think that's, I think that's well said.
That assumption already exists within our firefighters to.
When I was going to say, one thing, one thing, I, just a quick related point to this, and I know it might be addressed in other places, but I know in this section, what's written about health services involves putting our eggs in sort of this consortium approach that's in there, that's the only piece that relates to that. I guess my question is, I'm not, you know, advocating hard for this, but that health center that we have in town, that really should be a 24/7, seven day a week operation. You know, the fact that it's not open on weekends or at night is a problem. And to Cindy's point about higher level of care, you know, type of a thing, even, even if it's not a doctor, it almost feels like there should be a nurse practitioner there, that those guys don't have to always run to Farmington for any issue that they can't deal with locally, because we don't have anybody here, but you know, that, that facility is well-equipped, but if it had staffed, you know, maybe we wouldn't be shuttling people to Farmington, or have to worry about that being the only place.
Well, I think, yeah, and I think, I, I don't disagree with a lot of what you're saying there, Steve. I mean, I think there's going to be an interesting, it's going to be an interesting dynamic. I don't know if you are familiar where Domino's Pizza is, in that corner there. Used to be Twin Pond Campground, the only reason I know I used to have to mow it in high school. But it's right across from Franklin Printing, you'll see a bunch of fences up there. That's going to be a convenient at the 24.
That's important too.
That's in Farmington. And with the road improvements that we're at, we're 35, 40 minutes, which doesn't, seems like a lot, it's tougher in the winter, but I think, and I do know somebody locally who's just going to take their boards, and they'll be a nurse practitioner by June here, and they plan on setting up active practice here. So, I think, I think it's important, I think Steve's brought up, maybe we should add another action item, is that we should strive to be able to provide, there should be some kind of services over the next 10 years, where we can have accessibility as 24/7.
24/7 coverage of some.
Because I think, with the aging population, I don't think that that's a bad argument, and that the town maybe should, were to incentivize that, because, let's face it, I've watched that facility since 2008. We're on like the sixth or seventh dock there, or nurse practitioner. They're trying to make it work, as they do, it's, we're not a large volume, and it's hard to staff 172 hours a week.
Yeah, they need another income stream.
Yeah.
I, the, the business models.
The business model's horrible.
Yeah.
So, I mean, and that's why in other communities, like, I mean, they used to have one in Belgrade, it's not there anymore.
Right.
And Belgrade's a bigger community.
I think from the comp plan standpoint, we can't figure out how to financially adapt, create that, but we should probably set the bar that the residents of Rangel deserve 24/7 coverage nearby. What, like, to your point, Chris, about the, you know, emergency care, I mean, that's the same distance as Farmington Hospital anyhow, so that doesn't really impact.
No, it doesn't, I mean, I can make it in 30 minutes, but I mean, not everybody can.
Yeah, so can I, but not with a fully located patient in the back of the car. Yeah, so can I, but not with a fully located patient in the back of the car.
But but I mean, I think the point is is that I would like to see if we can stick something in there that says. That gives the town the ability, if there's an opportunity for someone who says, look, I'll step up and cover those. After hour or to do those other pieces that the town would have a way that they wanted to financially.
Right. Cause we have a facility, we have, the facility has, you know, the equipment and the 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 ability to provide twenty four seven coverage.
I think the nurse practitioner is gonna set up their own practice anyway. So I mean, I think there's a lot of opportunity there and I think. If the town, it's gonna be harder for anyone.
Isn't the operator of that facility have like five or six places that they?
Yeah, but but we've watched that model going on Steve for seventeen years and.
Yeah.
Express that. I don't see that. I mean, you're welcome to talk with Kate Quimby who runs that facility.
I don't, I don't care.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's realistic that they will switch to twenty four seven. I think we're wanting to get somebody else that maybe willing to supplement that or just like we talked about.
I think, I think it's realistic to put it in the plan as an objective, a goal, an idea. I don't care whether that provider can do it or not. Maybe somebody else will come along five years from now.
Yeah. And an action for pharmacy, cause those are the two things we hear the most about.
I I have something to say. I think if you're thinking about this document as a forward looking document. You'd want to have a really open ended statement that would inspire or incentivize the discussion. Of future medical opportunities in Rangeley. And we don't know because they're on the state level and the national level, they're working really hard for rural medicine. And there's there's a new paradigm. I mean, and we haven't seen it yet and it possibly could be part of an EMS. That has an affiliation with a physician in an area that deals with the radius. So I would keep the um. You know, the the language in that as obtuse as possible to kind of just.
I agree. I don't want to set ourselves up.
Because we can't, we're not in business to be in medicine.
We are not.
And we can't tell a doctor what to do with his place. That's insane.
No, and we can't, right. And I think what we say is, I think we say something in there that we do allow. Through either municipal or state or federal grants, that if somebody wants to provide the services that we think are needed. That we're able to help supplement that because it's not gonna work any other way.
Right.
The business model doesn't work.
Right.
The pharmacy.
We all, we all agree that the the current situation is inadequate. So if the current situation is is inadequate, the plan should suggest that we want to improve.
How do we get to adequate?
Healthcare opportunities. How that happens isn't our job, but I think we should establish the fact that. We have gaps in service.
And I, and if we can write in there, Donna, with your wordsmithing, something in there that will open the door for some points for. Grant opportunities and I think that should be. Feathered in there. I think that number ten should be something of that effect, say.
So I have strive, uh, strive to have twenty four seven professional health services available in Rangeley. Yeah. Now the twenty four, that might not be, that might not be attainable. The seven day a week might be, but I don't think there's any harm in putting it in.
You can strive.
I I think, I think.
Might be, it might be, we don't know.
Well, you don't, you're right.
Yeah, I think if you write it.
Why you leave it in?
I think if you write it in the standpoint being the fact that. Uh, twenty four seven services is with is forty plus miles away. We want to encourage the development of some in our direct.
Unique and innovative opportunities to create medical care for the residents of Rangeley.
Correct.
You know, something like that.
Yeah, something to the effect that, you know, it's.
We don't know yet, but it's gonna be awesome.
Maybe that's in the section where we talk, we did, is there, I can't remember, did you put a section in there where it talks about how far every health systems are away? Uh, health services. Yeah, the town does not have a pharmacy and is at least forty five minutes from the nearest hospital. So referencing something from that first paragraph of health services saying. Due to the fact as we've outlined in that, that first paragraph of health services, we would like to see a goal strive to. To fill that need that isn't being met.
Correct.
Twenty four seven, right here for the citizens in the region of Ridge. Cause that's good.
I.
Does that help San Diego River in Dallas?
I know, but the thing of it, I just don't set us up for not being able to attain this goal. I mean, the wording, I agree with Wendy, needs to be as as obtuse as possible, just keeping it on the radar. For the town to support.
That's why I think we say continue to strive for, and then that way we're not setting a deadline. How about that?
Think we're setting anything up to fail anyhow. I mean, this is, these are, you know, out.
Yeah.
Goals over the next ten years. I mean, there's no idea whether it's success or failure at this point, who knows?
I mean, ten years ago, twelve years ago, when they wrote this plan, we were literally using dial up. And broadcasting it with a satellite dish to the top of the mountain so we could run credit cards.
Exactly.
And now we have broadband in every household, pretty much.
What you need, Donna? Well, okay, so continue to strive for twenty four seven. I had professional health services, but maybe on on net medical needs.
Yeah, I kind of.
Medical care.
Yeah. Urgent medical care, I don't know, something.
Yeah, it's not like a term, medical care.
Some of the things they're talking about too for regional health is creating like a depot for pharmaceuticals too.
Yep.
Which has to, you have to have a bonded person. It has to be in a locked facility, you know, and all that kind of stuff.
And they've tried a couple of times to get that down to state level and it's failed.
And that there's some good programs that they're working out west with that, so who knows, it could happen.
Right, right. And again, if money is available to get these things up and running.
Right, if you just need to buy a locker.
Yeah, let's, let's cat, let's cash the widest net we can for that.
Okay.
Yeah, because that goes back to the point that we're also trying to create an avenue for grants. And like the northern broader commissioned grant people might be interested in helping to fund twenty four seven covers.
Right. That's a good point.
Um, anything else on public facilities and services?
No, other than, yeah, I gave you that edit. You just said we got nine and we're adding ten.
Okay, so.
So we'll leave it to your best judge.
Just do that and send it off to the.
That'd be great.
All in favor?
Sure.
Okay, so now we're on the climate.
Climate.
I'm gonna try to keep us moving in a good case.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think I have. I didn't have any real comments on this.
It's really just facts, right?
Yeah.
I didn't either.
Change climate change to just climate.
Mm hmm, that's a good idea.
And I also.
Add on page seven, cause it still says climate change.
Um, and I also talked, instead of talking about climate change, I talked about extreme weather.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, I think that's a good way to do it.
Um, well, well, oh, yeah.
Just the header.
Yeah. So this is, um.
And this has no actionable steps. Is that how we want that?
Well. It's, I think there's a few.
Oh, just a couple, yeah.
Yeah, so doing energy audits. Um, you know, cutting consumption. Look for renewable energy resources if they make sense. Um, bulk purchase like a solarise if that, um. The vulnerability, now that's something the um sewer department did, the sewer department did a vulnerability study. I don't know that the water district has done it, but it would be good to have that done.
I believe we have. We did that a while ago.
You know, you wanna know where where you might have washouts and stuff like that so that they can be fixed in advance.
We 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 did, I believe, cause that's the reason we did the grant to move the Richardson Street redundancy. Where we buried the pipe because, cause that bridge was the main water line that comes in and that bridge collapsed and broke. It would take out the water lines. That's why we installed the Richardson. So I believe we've done that at the water district.
And you got rid of the wooden aqueduct.
Yeah.
Right, so the the, I mean, this is local, it's it's local weather stuff. I found it fascinating. Um.
I think also too, with one thing, cause we we had, we've had this with the citizenry and stuff is we should also maybe have a goal in there to. Continue to educate citizenry on actionable steps when extreme weather is coming or happening. Because I think we've had a couple of emergency responses we've had to do where people have had severe weather exposure. Isn't that what happened to that poor woman?
So to prepare and respond to extreme weather.
Well, just help people prepare and understand what's available shelters, you know, those type of, I mean, a lot of people have gotten generators and those type of things. But I mean, also, it's real important, um, I mean, just tell one of the elderly gentleman this winter, he was running. Electric heaters and sleeping in his kitchen and these things and. You know, those little propane heaters and those things, those give off carbon monoxide.
Right.
You know, you can.
Right.
Mm hmm, not safe.
It's not safe.
Okay, so we'll add a seven, continue to educate residents to prepare for and respond to extreme weather events.
Yeah, I think it's, I think that's something our public safety does a good job already on, but I think. If it may be, again, operate grant opportunity to get more of that, we can use that as a measurement. Anything else on climate?
Is that okay to send to the board of slides?
Yes, please send. Steve's there, but in the dark.
Uh, yeah, well, that's cause I'm reading.
No problem.
You're right, uh, I'm back. I didn't want you to see my staring into the camera while I was trying to read something.
It's fine, Steve, we won't hold it against you. I think you're probably polishing up for your golf game.
No, I just played two rounds on Cape Cod where I am now.
I don't know if you saw, Shugel is gonna be building a new nine hole walking course.
I saw that, yeah.
Big snow making pond in the middle of it. It's pretty innovative idea. Well, you can walk it in a little over an hour, so supposedly you're something.
That's what people want these days.
Yeah. Yeah, so, okay, future land use plan.
Can we do transportation that's.
All right, well, it's not, yeah, do you wanna?
I want, I want it, cause we've got the map.
Have it on the, on the list, sorry.
Oh.
Yeah, okay. What do we have left to fix on this? I think we're pretty good.
So I think, I think we're good on this. This was really written, this is done, this is part of Avcod's contract. And and they did this and uh, there was initially, there was a lot of stuff there from the downtown. Revitalization plan. And so that's gonna go in as a um, as an amendment, I mean, not as an appendix.
Yeah.
As an appendix.
It's still in the one I have for four sixteen on page nine. Downtown revitalization, Rangeley Downtown Revitalization Action.
So I talk about it, it gets talked about.
But you're gonna appendix it, right?
And then, and then I do believe it says that, um. Right, it just says that it was done and had what the goals were.
Okay. So Donna, my only comment, and I know this isn't the final version, but I would recommend we definitely make headers moved over to the top of first pages. Instead of the last, like on nine, it's the headings, just, I know we're not on the final thing on that, but that's a small pet peeve.
Yeah.
But I think we're in pretty good shape.
Yeah, and this is all, this has all the stuff the DOT is looking for. There are what, ten maps that go along with this.
And we don't have all the project costs, right? We only had some of them, but not all of them, correct?
Yeah, the the project costs, um, and the stuff, the stuff on twenty two and twenty three. Uh, that's, I thought that was deleted. I I hadn't deleted it.
On page, so on page twenty seven seventeen, there's like two, three, twenty twenty three projects where there's no project costs. So we're just gonna put information not available.
Because. Those were, I don't know, whether those were. It's only the old projects, um.
And then I would just suggest from a formatting, that you move the three, since they're all the same year, move the three that you don't have the project costs up above. And then do a hard break and then list all the ones that you have the project costs.
On page seventeen.
Yeah, page seventeen, I've got blanks on mine.
So the project costs, uh, there's.
It'd be good to either get them or put information not available.
Leaving, my guess is is that they're done.
You should have that in the file, right, Joe?
DOT would, yeah.
Yeah.
DOT workflow.
And I think that we should probably take out all the twenty twenty three anyways.
Let's just ditch it and then that way we don't have inconsistent.
Right, and then we'll just call this.
You've got twenty four, twenty five.
Twenty four, twenty five. And, you know, I mean, they're, DOTs, they have their work plans. And then a bridge collapses and everything changes and gets put off.
List all this in here, cause I don't feel like it supports really anything other than. To me, it's immediately outdated. So do we need to list it in there?
Um.
Could we just say the DOT work plan outlines that and then put a link or a hyperlink or something?
Yeah, it says MDOT's work plan outlines the capital and maintenance projects that the department plans to perform over the next three years. It's calendar based and includes all MDOT work activities.
So I would say instead of just saying source, putting all this in there and the source, I would just, I would just list the link.
Okay.
And then somebody wants to go and look at it. If you wanted to say, this is the total amount that's been spent in the area, documented amount, let's just keep it simple. I just feel like the more it's with a working document, then then at least that people go into that three year plan.
Yeah.
And then in six years, when it's different, they click on it, they got the latest, greatest.
Okay. Great. I like it. Yeah.
And then this is, go ahead.
I have a question. Um, Donna, in the, um, under DOT, their terminology, complete streets, which. We know what complete streets are.
Yeah.
Um, does that obligate, um, Rangeley to have to comply with their complete street standards? Because that, we ran into that in Aquasic and that was just a mess.
What's what's that?
Complete streets.
Yeah.
It's a DOT thing and 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 it's a nice concept, meaning that you have to incorporate bikes and pedestrian and roadways. But there, there's, sometimes it's just a different animal and I I just, I just want to make sure that we're. I understand that that's their word, the terminology and they use that, but I wouldn't want to have to. Do any improvements that had to abide by complete streets. Uh, it's just more of a question, really.
It doesn't say that. So what it talks about is that they did, they had a policy in twenty fourteen. They updated it in twenty twenty four. It's um, to improve mobility, benefits for all users.
Intermodal, yeah.
You know, um, the the more vulnerable and then it says the twenty twenty four update of the policy. Now utilizes the roadway context classifications and providing contextually appropriate guidance.
Okay, good. That's what we were looking for, that word, guidance.
Elements into transportation projects.
Because complete streets was more driven. I mean, it was like directives.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, yeah, we, yeah.
And I don't think that there is anything in here about doing a complete streets policy.
Well, if they've already replaced it with another one in twenty twenty four, you know?
Yeah, like it says on page twenty, coordinating with other vehicular infrastructure and street states. From a complete streets approach.
Okay, that's soft, that's soft, it's okay.
Yeah.
That's the only comment I had.
I know, I. You won't catch me recommending that.
It makes sense some places, but not others, you know, it's like the sidewalk to nowhere thing, you know?
There are no two parcels, you know, a road goes by so many things. And every time you try to do that, it means you're taking out an old road or you're making an extremely steep slope.
And a developer has to put in, or a person has to put in a sidewalk to go, that goes nowhere.
Okay, so with those changes, uh, deleting that table, adding a link. Um.
Okay.
Off to the OS?
Yes. Anyone oppose? No?
No. And adding the link to the, the. And adding the link to the, the, um, MDOT info, is that what it was, Chris?
Yeah, the link.
Okay.
Yeah, the work plan.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think we should just make it the generic link to their work plan, not to that particular file.
So we're reducing the text in this substantially, that's a good idea.
I just think whenever we can reference the third-party sources and then that saves us.
Because it'll stay fresh.
Yeah, it won't get.
Yeah.
Okay, are we ready to go back to future land use plans?
Let me just take a moment and, um, I had a conversation with Erica Buffkins at Abcod today. And, because I wanted her input on what, you know, she talks to the state a lot more than I do. And she said what their big focus is these days is, um, the future land use plan. That's what they're looking at. If they like the future land use plan, the rest of it sort of falls by the wayside. She has looked at both the text and I have a map to show you, so I want to, I want to spend a little bit of time on the map. We talked about this, we drew some lines. I, we drew lines, we erased lines, we drew different lines, we erased, you know, and so I want to make sure that I have the lines right. On here, um, so I want you to look at both the text and the maps in this.
Do we want to reference anything with setbacks? Because I know we did talk a lot about that in Village Residential and a few other. Or do we want to keep it as generic as possible? Because I mean, I think you kind of tangentially discussed it.
We talked about build twos in the village area.
Yeah.
Tried to build that.
Right, and it's not, I don't really see it here with that, but.
Future land use.
Because that's the one thing we talked about, like a downtown commercial in the village allowing build twos because that allowed. Some additional EDUs and some other things that people might be willing to do.
And it's, again, it's just a discussion, consider, um, you know, having a discussion, talking about implementing build-two parameters versus setback in X area.
Yeah, and I was just down in Atlanta, because one of my fraternity brothers, this is what he does. And it's pretty interesting. When they've made those changes, it's really.
Changes everything.
It's really helped some of these areas.
We zoned ourselves into a box, that's what we did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and we zoned ourselves, we, we pushed ourselves back, we used to have front porches. And you could sit on the front porch and you could have a conversation with someone walking by. And what we did was we, we developed these, these big setbacks, these big, so we pushed all the houses back. Now.
Got room for the wing of the plow to go through. Earl makes it happen.
And, and, and so, you know, it, it's, and, and the, and the front porch is now the back deck.
Right.
Yeah, which has now become this more reclusiveness.
And now nobody's even going there, they're just staring at their phones inside.
And, and.
I sit on my front porch too.
And we have a long business process.
We do.
So, um, anyways.
I think it's important that we somehow feather in the build-two and the other thing we talked about, because we talked about. Like right now, we have a twenty-foot side setback in the village zone.
Which is nuts.
Which makes zero sense.
Zero sense.
Yeah.
So how I set that back?
Literally the lot right next to it is five foot.
So rather than any of that, you know, being specific, I just said that they should, the space in bulk standards. So that's everything, that's.
Yeah, if you feel that that language covers it, I'm fine with it. If you think that that covers it enough to open the door to revisit.
Maybe you need some text in the body of the document and, and use that as your recommendation, because it is broad, but. You know, say we're contemplating having a discussion about built-two in certain.
And so, in the residential.
Pedestrian friendly areas.
Well, I mean, I think we could cross-reference it in the housing and say in the housing, as we reference in the future land use plan. About these pieces of set, what do, what do you see in the languages?
This is the land use one, this would be the zoning stuff.
So what it says in the residential areas, the space in bulk standards should be reviewed for this district to determine if the space in bulk standards. And the allowable uses of chapter thirty-eight, oh, should be reviewed. Yeah, we need to get that out, um, to see if they are still appropriate for the type of development Rangeley is, is experiencing. Um, so that's in the residential section and in the commercial section.
What about the village residential? Is that where you're saying that is? That's where you're saying that was the village residential, is what you're saying.
And then in the village, it says, as with the residential's, uh, district space involved standards and allowable uses of chapter eighteen. Thirty-eight should be reviewed to see if they're still appropriate for the type of development potentially is experiences and then commercial.
Well, you could list up build-tws under your, um, list, your sentence with commas there, um, under village residential areas. So you're, for example, um, are there different types of housing such as larva fairing, blah, 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 dorms, blah, blah, blah. And also, um, you know, land utilization of ideas such as build-two, you know?
Right, for example, are there different?
Right, I think that covers it.
Because sometimes if you.
You know what's, what's not in that though? Uh, I don't know if it's meant to not be in there, but there's no mention of condominiums. In that section or the commercial, or I don't, maybe not.
Really should be, you're right, Steve.
That's a mess.
But most of it covers that.
Well, it's a wide variety of housing types, so it doesn't.
Well, I guess, yeah, I mean, I, I, I think a condo is more is duplex townhouses.
So you want condominiums?
Okay.
I mean, I'd put them specifically in there, you know, uh, as a, as a thing, because that's.
That's different than a multi-unit house, condominium.
Exactly, yeah.
There's a wide condominium, you have a multifamily house.
Why? Because of ownership. Multi-family house often implies that that's one owner that owns and rents out three or four units. It's very seldom that you see any kind of multi-family ownership unless it's been condo, because there's no co-ops in the.
For zoning purposes, though, they're multifamily.
Yeah, that's true.
Because we don't get into the zoning, doesn't get into. But we can put, it doesn't.
I don't think it hurts.
Yeah.
Because you mentioned dorms and boarding houses and all these other oddball things.
Either redact it all to multifamily or add, I would say add in the condo, because I think. That way it can't, someone can't rule it out.
Sounds good.
Right. That's what I'd be more up to see happen.
Oh, there you have a sentence too, Donna, this area is appropriate for incentives for higher density. If affordable and/or workforce housing is constructed, so you could say this area is appropriate for incentives for higher density. Or adjusted zoning regulations and it's spatial regulations, would that be? So.
Are you on page five?
I'm on page five, on the very top.
Very top, yeah. So just like add build-two such as.
Yeah, wherever it makes sense in there.
I just think, I just think somehow mentioning in there that we can adjust setbacks.
Because that would be such an easy fix too, for, you know, the next couple years.
Using space in bulk, I can say, I can list them all out, and space in bulk. Locks them all together in two words. But, um.
If you feel that, if you feel that that covers it from a legal standpoint, then I'm fine with leaving it vague. But if you don't think, if someone's like, you're going to say, well, space in bulk doesn't constitute setbacks and those things, then I think that's my concern.
It doesn't.
Okay, so the first time.
So maybe in the first time you put in there, you say space in bulk and you say includes but not limited to setbacks. Built-to, those type of other tools, and then that way, when you reference space in bulk throughout the rest, you've already constituted in the first paragraph.
Right.
Does that work?
Yep.
A little bit of wordsmith into that.
Yep.
Okay, anything else with future land use?
The only thing about, uh, I would add, uh, in the commercial areas, um, commercial downtown. Uh, there's no mention of housing or residential in those areas. Now, there already is residential within commercial areas for sure. But I was mostly thinking about the potential for second-floor, uh, commercial space that could become apartments and stuff like that. Should there not be something in the commercial downtown area to suggest residential use?
Well, the first paragraph, Steve, it says, public retail services lodging and residential. Uh, and then, and I guess you could also do something to the effect of. The encouragement of multi-use of commercial buildings.
Well, many, yeah, many towns advocating, you know, the second floor.
Mixed use, yeah.
We did that in the housing session, but we can.
Well, if you mention.
You were speaking to the point that the land use piece is pretty important. Therefore, you might want to be there as well.
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could feather it in there and say an encouragement of mixed use as outlined in the housing chapter.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Yeah.
And then cross-reference it.
Right.
I think you could clean that up with half, half a sentence.
Yeah.
But I agree, Steve, it was hit right between the eyes, because there's some, there's some good opportunities with some of the buildings in town, that they could have upper floors. Take advantage, I could, I know, I know at least three of them that. There are some that are, I mean, that's the old Scrivners, Jimmy turned his.
Well, and that would incentivize, uh, you know, a developer too, I mean, there, I can think of a lot that I would love to buy and put a three-story building there with, you know. Residents on top and commercial offices and then commercial would be perfect, but.
The big thing that's happening a lot in, in Portland, they're redoing.
Definitely in Portland, yes.
I've looked at several projects, especially Washington Avenue there, they've done a lot, we're trying to do the first floor. And then the upper floors, because you get the view.
That's just like how towns used to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Okay, so.
But actually, it's business on the upper floor, because Scrivners, my grandmother worked there, that's where the telephone company was, second floor. Where, uh, that apartment Carolyn sold.
In the, um, in, in the, um, economy section, we have a piece on employee housing. Because I think it, it came up so much in the economy. And so it says in there, zoning regulations are important and they are intended to protect the community. However, sometimes there could be intentions or barriers to desirable development. Uh, the, the, the town has some options to make that more possible by removing, reducing or changing some zoning regulations. One example, if a business owner wants to build housing units on their property. They have to have land area to meet both the housing and the residential uses. Um, and then it talks in the, about getting rid of that. So that, let's say the IGA has a lot of land and they have the need for housing, that they could build it. Now, what that does suggest is that it's only for employee housing. Um, and, but the town, I would never suggest the town get into overseeing, let's say the IGA builds housing. And we don't want the town overseeing who's living in that housing. Because you can't.
It's too much, yeah.
Can't. And so I think that, um, that changing that in the economy section to mixed use. And just allowing, allowing residential, um. So instead of employee housing, I'll just call it mixed use.
So you don't have to change the zone, right? You're not creating a mixed-use zone, you're just having that as an allowable use. So residential is an allowable use in commercial.
And it's allow, but you have to double the minimum lot size.
Which is nuts.
So.
Because that's a layered fact, yeah.
So the only, I'm, I'm talking about deletion there.
Does the two thousand, LG two thousand three cover that now?
Two oh three, oh, um, with the ADUs and so forth? I, I don't think they address parking though. I don't, I don't think it addresses parking at all.
So the, the LG was going to state right now, okay, want to eliminate parking requirements, which is nuts.
We've been through that one before.
Because they believe that if you get rid of parking spaces, you have paper buildings. Then no, no place to rent a park wants to live there. It's nuts.
Yeah, it's like Boston, yeah.
So. So, yes, I will change that in the economy section to mixed use. Instead of calling it employee housing, just call it mixed use.
I like it, yeah.
Residential and commercial, make sure that the language all lines up.
Yeah.
Same intent, but that it's just, it just creates an option if a.
It's a better term.
It is.
Yeah.
And then I will cross-reference that in the future land use plan.
Good, good on you there.
Okay?
Yeah.
Um, want you to look at the map?
Sure.
Want to come over? Yeah. So what this is, is your existing zoning.
Is this a brand-new version?
Yes.
Okay.
So this is your existing ver, uh, your existing zoning with these two crosshatches.
Steve, do you have that file? Uh, will you email that file? No?
No, I don't. That's all right. I'll defer to you guys on that.
Okay, so this is where we're talking about. Minimum lot sizes, road frontage, setbacks.
Right.
All of that stuff, and we use the sewer line. Um, it's all going to have to be connected to the sewer. Um, so we've got this area right here, here, this is Cottage Road, uh.
Is that all the way into Cottage Road there?
That's, yeah, that's Cottage.
Yeah, because that's.
Right?
This is, uh, marble station, that's there that's pretty changed, yeah, Cottage.
So it's this right in here.
Yes.
So you go kind of from this dense.
So what's that going to become?
So this would become, um, no, proposed village, just village.
So that's the same as this one here, that's the exact same.
This, okay.
And are we filling out full lots? So that would make this proposed village, that full lot would be proposed. Right down to the shoreline.
And the one is commercial currently?
Yeah.
Because there was a train station there at one point, is that why?
Where?
Over here?
No, the train station was here and then the other train stations.
Oh, okay.
And that has to do with probably grocery stores.
So the IGA is.
Yeah, the IGA in the first.
This is the IGA right in here?
Yeah.
Oh, I respect this, yeah, okay.
So that's Dallas, you know, the case you all told us, yeah.
So this is the water district, the wellness center.
Right.
The doctor's office.
The Lark Office, yeah.
So there's that, that, all existing, all this is, salad colors are existing. This darker hatch shows conservation areas, just so you can see how extensive it is.
Is this proposed conservation or that's current?
Yeah, conserved parcels. And then we have, this is the resort.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be in here.
Yep.
Yeah.
Part of it.
Yeah.
It's not all of it.
No, this is further down, this is France Road.
France Road's here.
So that would allow like blue lodge and.
Blue lodge is way over here.
That's further down.
That's further down.
Yeah, so it doesn't count.
Okay, all right, well, never mind then.
Okay.
Okay, and then we have, so this. I mean, thi- this means business, I mean, you, you're taught, we've, we've heard about housing. I think this is like one of the leading things to talk about at the public hearing, you've heard about housing over and over and over again. You have taken it seriously and you have created this area in here. That opens up some opportunities for additional housing to happen within the village area. Where the sewer is, where the water is, um.
So is this Blue Lake Road?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's the school parcel, then the daycare parcel. And then this is over here, this is, that's Cherry and Christie's.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's Pleasant Street, and that's some of that area that's not developed.
And.
But the water line, I don't know goes, it only goes partway up.
It does, I think it only goes.
Yeah, so you might wanna fix that.
To.
It's just past Pleasant, it goes to Olympus, right? Doesn't it go to Olympus Dividends?
Yeah, I, I think it's below, I think it's below here, this is the new water merge line.
You might wanna check out on that, because water, water does not know that hot.
Well.
Isn't this based on sewer line?
But it's, it's more, but yeah, on the sewer.
It's a sewer line go all the way up to the water guys? Well, that's why I verify, I verify, I'm worried about this, I'm very concerned section.
Okay.
Just, we're gonna be consistent, otherwise someone will be like, well, I'm gonna make it done with this sewer, and then we open up all, you know.
Well, what it does is. Opens, it includes areas that are close to the sewer, so that if somebody wants to extend the sewer line.
They can pay the money.
They can pay the money, they can do it. And it gives them, it gives them that ability, so that's why we did go out a little bit more.
And I like that idea, it encourages development.
It encourages growth about the sewer and the water.
Where you want.
Right.
But they would be, the way the word is written, they'd be.
Because.
What do we decide over here?
So here's the midtown one.
Yeah.
We've looked at, we've looked at a lot of different versions of it, but this is what I think we came up with. Um.
That's only one side of the street, right?
Right.
Yeah, we had a long discussion about that.
I thought you were doing all side, because it's already, already over here, ask the answer.
No.
I think we, I think we decided not to go over, to just keep it here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, well, there was, there was some concern.
Well, it's interesting too, if we looked at the beginning with habitat maps. This is like sandwiched right in between a bunch of different habitats.
Right, well, this is the old, um.
So it's a very special habitat. Um, and then, so we had a discussion about. This piece here. And of being, being. Uh, this, this is, uh, what is it, it's a.
Back of the move, it's a three-unit house.
Three-unit house.
With the back, he's using it as vehicle storage right now.
Big, yeah, big equipment storage in back.
Yeah.
And so we talked about that as being, um. I would say that it would probably not be downtown commercial, but, but it didn't get included, and, you know, it's, it's another one of these things that we went back and forth and back and forth.
Well, this impression will happen to that around the next year.
Right, it's because of Rangeley River.
Yeah.
You know, it's the only north flowing river that, I mean, that we have here, I mean, that's a big important river for the fisheries.
So, it's not there.
Right.
We talked about it.
That's already those protected, probably.
Yeah, it's already first protected, this is all, yeah.
We, we, we talked about it.
No, I think it's fine, we agree with what it is.
And, and I just wanna double check that. Um, so, I mean, what we have is this and this, and that. Is a lot more than I ever did on any plan that I ever did. Um, because what typically, what towns would do is they would say our growth areas are, they pick whatever districts, and they'd say, these are our growth areas, and these are our rural areas, and that's the way it is. And, but this, I think, um.
Well, that should.
And I haven't really taken it seriously.
Yeah, it's a good steering mechanism, it really is, you know.
Good, alright, I'm okay with it.
Oh, one thing I wanna add to this, it are notes that say that these lines are approximate.
Oh, that's good, yeah, yeah. Cause then you have to go to meetings to get that figured out, final.
Right, right, um. That more discussion. The, the final lines will, will be, um, determined by the residents. Right, right.
Okay, so future loose frame, we're done that, do we have to go over?
Make those changes and off the EOS.
Alright, and then vision introduction, do we have to cover any more of that?
Um. I was not really prepared to go over that.
Are we happy with Gary's final? Let's table those.
I didn't think we'd ever get this far.
We're hammering today.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're on it, this is fabulous.
Alright, so we'll say vision, Steve, are you good with the intro with Gary?
Yeah, if you, if you guys, I am for sure.
Okay, and then implementation and evaluation. So let's send those out again, Donna, we did that this week.
Okay, so I will send out the implementation and evaluation, I have not written it yet, I'm expecting it to be a few paragraphs. This is where I'm going with it, it's, it's a requirement.
Keep it simple.
So wait, what do you mean by implementation?
How this plan gets implemented.
And so this is what body in the town of Rangeley is gonna be the driver?
Right, so what I wanna say is that the board of selectmen will be the driver. That they will establish the priorities. Um, that they will track. The changes on a spreadsheet. As, as they happen, and in terms of evaluation, that, and, and they will decide who does what.
The only issue I've got with that is I feel like the board of selectmen already have quite a bit on their plate. And, and the problem we've had with this thing is it's sad, I would suggest we did this in Wyndham and it was fairly effective. Is set up. An implementation committee that develops and brings recommendations to kind of keep i- in the face of the select board.
I totally disagree with that.
I, I think that's, I, I think that that's okay to do that, and I think you have an ordinance committee, and I don't know.
Okay.
If, but here's, here's the thing, Chris, is that. I, I, I've, the other, the flip side to that is, is that you get some rogue implementation committee that's.
Well, they can't do anything, all they're doing is, is bringing attention to the things that need to be done, I just feel that it's. And I'm not trying to knock the current board or anything there, I'm just saying, I don't necessarily believe that it's gonna get picked up and run with, with everything else that they've got going on, they got a lot going on.
I have, I have a suggestion.
Okay.
And I've seen it both ways, I mean, I've done business in Wyndham and certainly familiar with other towns too, the, the, um, the elected officials should be the people that implement it, because those are the people that were voted in by the people. And I would say if they're not accustomed to that, and also you don't have that other layer of another, you know, board. Um, say, write it in, write in the implementation, say the board will address comprehensive plan actionable steps four times a year.
There you go, alright, I'll go with that.
Yeah.
It needs to be quarter, it needs to be quarter, a quarterly update.
Because then you can put it on the calendar.
Yeah.
You can't skirt the issue, it doesn't get shelved, and that, that gives the other boards the work that they should be doing.
You wanna oppose to that?
No, that's, I, that's my suggestion as well, it needs to, you get elected, this is part of your responsibility.
Well, I just want, I just want something that holds it to the fire, because it, it's not there, and then we also need to make sure. Which didn't happen last time, and Sydney Remmersby harping on this a hundred times, it said. All ordinances need to be updated within eighteen months of the completion of the plan in order to be effective. So we can avoid the issues that happened with lawsuits before, where the comp plan says one thing, and the ordinance say another.
And, you know, you guys don't have a town planner, and that makes it, that work unbelievably difficult.
It is.
I mean, I would say that there's probably a really good argument for getting a consultant to come in and help with some of the heavy lifting with some of that stuff, because. Most planning boards, if those are the boards that do the ordinance, they, they're, they're sending fifteen ordinances up to, um, you know, their select board or their, or their council every year. I mean, not three, so.
Yeah, well, I think, I think this is a prime opportunity for Donna to have some after-work after the project. Is to help get, get the ordinances cleaned up.
Brilliant.
No, I'm just saying, it's a, you're the logical person to work on that with them.
Right.
And then get the next step, so that way. The ordinance committee can, can keep things moving, because that's my biggest pet peeve from the last time, is that nothing got put in, and then we get these inconsistencies. And then a lawyer like me, who knows ladies and that stuff, can come in and drive a truck right through.
Right.
Anything that gets done, well, your ordinance is this, but your comp plan says this. I'm gonna argue your comp plan, so you gotta let me do it, because you said in your comp plan you wanted this, but you haven't fixed your ordinances, and they're stagnant, you haven't touched them in eight years.
Right.
And I don't, I'm not saying we aren't doing that, I think our ordinance committee, we have this great net, and it's doing a great job, and, and trying to move things along, and.
It's a lot of work.
It's a ton of work.
It's a huge job.
But we need somebody to do some heavy lifting, and that's why I think, I don't know what you've got budgeted, Joe, for next year, and the budget for that, if you don't, then for twenty-seven. Twenty-six, twenty-seven, there should be some money put in there to invest in that, because we need to clean that up, it's gonna be, the money spent on that is gonna be far less than defending a lawsuit in relation to that. We've already, we already know what that number looks like.
Yeah, it's not pretty.
That's, that's, that's been my standpoint on this, it's a bigger planning function, and in this budget, uh, there should be some remainder after this project to.
There's been carried forward in the prior two years, or, or at least the prior year, there's been a carry forward, you know.
We're trying to use that up with, with what we're doing now.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, let's just make sure, so it's not, we don't have to do a special election board to pull it out of the carry forward list.
But I think you had a very good, good discussion here, that it is the board of selectmen.
Yes.
Who are elected, they're responsible for it, but they would delegate it to staff, and committees.
Or committees, and, yeah.
Well, I think this heavy lifting needs to be done with somebody with consultative experience, because Wendy's right, to each tower.
But they'll be both, it'll be in tandem.
Right.
You know.
But I like, I like, I, I want in the plan there that it says for implementation, is a quarterly review and update that's presented to the citizenry. From the board of selectmen, so their feet are held to the fire. At the fir, we can even put in there, at the first meeting of each quarter, there should be an update. Something like that.
Just like you'd, I think, more of this.
Yeah, I think quarterly, I mean, because, you know, in the prior, you had the responsible party here.
Yep.
That was identified by the town manager and the board of selectmen.
Alright, good, anything else you need forgotten from that?
And then in terms of evaluation, you know, I'm just gonna write something up that we do, that there, um. Uh, that I need to work with Rec, I'm getting the building permit information tied into the GIS system at, um. At, um, AFCO.
Right.
So that we can be looking and seeing where the development is happening. And, um, I think, and so we'll look, we'll look at that, and hopefully that will be something that, that can happen, um. We got, we got stuff from, uh, assessing, and Erica was immediately able to update everything, so she knows where all the parcels are, that, the. The land trust owns, and the, you know, so there's, um, lots of good information that we can have on that, so we'll have that. Um, could, can we meet next week to talk about the introduction, the vision, and the evaluation and implementation plan sections?
I can, except for the first and second, because I'm in jury duty.
Hmm, yeah, the, the second, first and second are out for me as well, I just am slammed at the office.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of April, I mean, twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, thirtieth, I could meet.
So, we are, like, uh, what about? The thirtieth is okay?
Good with me.
No, I'm out. What time on the thirtieth, though, I might be able to get back, but I've got meetings in Portland.
Um.
But you don't need me, you guys can go without me. I'm trying to get here.
This would be to talk about the vision.
Yeah, I've already booked up next week, so it's, it's hard for me, sorry.
Okay, um.
But I mean, if that's when everybody else can meet, then don't slow down on my part.
Well, so let's look at, um, how about the seventh, or the, which date is better, Wednesday, the night? E- either Wed, Wednesday's better than Thursday, but I could do the seventh or the eighth. You wanna say Wednesday, the seventh? Four P M?
I mean, is this the initial one to go to them, or is this the, can these three overlap for initial to go to the board? Why can't we just do them by email?
This is the introduction, the vision, and the implementation and valuation.
We've already looked at them a couple of times, why don't we just get them out, why don't we, why don't you send them out?
I don't like doing it by email.
Okay. Well then, those of you who want to meet, you can meet on the thirtieth.
I don't, I'd rather.
Do you have to have a quorum for that kind of stuff?
We'll have a quorum out there. There's a chance we'll have a quorum on the thirtieth.
Well, what about Wednesday, the seventh?
Works for me.
Works for me. Steve, Wednesday, the seventh?
Yeah.
Wednesday, the seventh, but I gotta be done by, I think, five thirty.
Four P M?
Yeah.
Is that, is that the date you're, you're in Portland, you wanted?
No, um, no, no, Wednesday, the seventh, first Monday, I have a Sonic meeting, and we're working on a major project to. With the lodge, so I gotta, that meeting starts at five thirty, so.
Okay, and so that is.
You'll, we'll send out, you'll send out the documents ahead of time, so we can be prepared to.
Yeah, I think we went through pretty quick today, having them added in, so.
Yeah, okay.
So four to, four to five thirty, if you guys wanna keep going, we'll try to do all action items in the first hour and a half.
Yeah.
If my meeting gets pushed out, then I can stay till six, but.
Okay, I will get all of this stuff to.
Alright, so what about the public hearing, would you wanna schedule that, because that's another thing.
Public chapters. And then. So, the next thing, um.
When do we have to do the public hearing, Joe, in order to make the September ninth?
Right, we're gonna have to, so, so let me just tell, what I'd like to do for the public hearing is do a public hearing, same thing, one in Rangeley, one in a closet.
Why is that?
I don't think we need to do two.
No. Not at this.
Larry can drive the six miles over, the rest of them drive over when they're pissed off about something.
Okay.
They can do it.
So.
We don't need to do two special meetings, we only have twenty-five people show up, or we had the same people show up twice.
So, um, I, I want some input from you, like, what are they used to in terms of, uh. And in terms of a presentation, you know, do they, will they expect a PowerPoint? How are we gonna get the word out, how, what?
I think the best, I think the best way we can do it is just put it out there and say, the draft of the comprehensive plan is available for pickup. Electronically, with this QR code, we just put it out there, it's PDF, you download it, or if you need a hard copy, stop by the town office, and they print out fifteen or twenty, have them ready, and if somebody needs one, they.
Free of charge.
Free of charge, they can pick it up, our oldest citizenry, or everybody else can read it on their iPad or whatever, and then say, boom. We will be having a public hearing for any comment on that, um, at that point, but I mean, really. Really, we've already done some of the, the pieces here, and I don't think, I guess the question we have to do is. Somebody comes in and brings up such a dramatic point that we need to make a change.
Right, right.
Do we have enough time to make a change?
Yeah, that's, that's a biggie right there, and enough time for them to add, you know. To review it. Before, like a month before the meeting.
Right, because it's a lot of reading.
It's a lot.
Yeah.
I think, I think that, that, that public meeting oughta be more focused around an explanation of the plan, like, in other words, a walkthrough of the highlights from each section.
But I think, yeah.
That would educate the people, because many people read the stuff and won't know why certain things are what they are, so if we sort of present it, maybe Chris presents it, maybe, uh. Whoever we want to actually go through it, and then open it up for some discussion, or something to that type of.
Yeah, well, I think, I think we go through, I, I like that idea, we do a speed through it in an hour. Kind of cover each of the chapters, we have copies here for people to take, and the QR code for people to scan, and then. And then we, we do a follow-up meeting, maybe two weeks later for anybody, or just give them an opportunity to provide, we're leaving, we can do it like what Lurk does, they do the hearing, and then they say thirty days public comment. We could say, we'll take your public comment back over the next.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
We can do two weeks, and then we'll meet and go over that public comment in an open meeting, we'll say, our follow-up meeting to review the public comment is this date, we'll announce it at that meeting. They can come and show up at that meeting, and then we're off to the races to the state.
So for the state, they have a thirty-day, they have a thirty-day wait period when you set the date for the public hearing for the public hearing, so. If we wanted to say, let's, you know, we, we will have the plan all ready to go by Friday, May ninth, let's say. Then we will, you know, we could schedule the public hearing for the week of June ninth.
That's a tough week, but yeah, okay.
That's fine.
I know you're being.
It's graduation, it's. Yeah, no. Oh, it is? Uh, so the week of June sixteenth? School be getting out that week, or is it earlier, Chris? We're gonna start.
I don't know, not on school board.
Oh, that's right, you're not on school board. Cause we're gonna start. Cause we're gonna start running into that whole thing with the state.
I think you just have to put a date on it and go, everyone's busy. Ev- I mean, everyone is. And this is the crazy time of year we're getting into too.
What about Wednesday, June eleventh?
I'd, I'd rather not do anything that week because this, everybody that works in school is gonna be spanned.
Oh, because that's town meeting?
It's gonna be upside down.
What about, is the following week okay?
Graduation's June seventh.
Okay.
And then eighth grade graduation's June tenth.
So the following week would be better.
Last day of school's the thirteenth.
That way you, you have a reminder posted, so people come to vote and see it. Oh yeah, there's a note here next week.
Okay, okay, and also pick it up.
Why don't we go to sixteen?
Yep.
Monday, is Monday a good day for a public hearing here?
Well, that's a Tuesday, sixteen. Oh, I'm looking at twenty twenty six. Sorry, I had the wrong thing.
It's a board of selectmen meeting.
So.
Is the sixteenth, yeah.
So seventeenth?
Seventeenth.
Planning board meets the second and fourth, right?
Wednesdays.
So what are we, Wednesday, the eighteenth?
As opposed to Ju- as Tuesday, the seventeenth?
Well, Tuesday, you're also, with, school board will be meeting that night because they have to certify the vote.
Okay, yeah, good point. Yeah, let's be mindful of that.
Or unless they're gonna do it on the eleventh, maybe they're gonna do it on the eleventh, but it's up to you.
Eighteenth, eighteen.
I do the eighteenth and I know this.
Yep.
There's a, well, cause they got, they also got bowling league where half the town goes to that on Tuesday.
What is the purpose of this one meeting here?
This is the public hearing.
Public hearing, okay.
This is the public hearing.
We'll see yellow ordinance. If we meet at six, we're outside.
So that means we could do the, have the plan ready, like you have a, a week wiggle round. From the ninth, right, right?
They usually meet later, so five thirty maybe.
But if we gave them enough of a heads up, we could say we're gonna do. We're gonna do, we're gonna do it at school.
If you think there's gonna be that much of a turnout.
I, I like the idea, whenever we do something at school, it encourages people to show up.
Yeah, I do too.
Probably should reserve it.
And then that's after school gets out, so that's the eighteenth. And then, um, we'll get the big, Joe, we'll get the big screen working.
Six P M?
Six.
So we can.
Are we gonna zoom in?
Are you gonna send in the, the entertainment like you did last time?
Yeah, that was great, yeah. I was impressed. I don't know how that guy did that, impressed.
Oh, you missed the second show at the sun meeting earlier.
Was that?
So what is the PowerPoint that we're gonna?
I was back too.
So what's the highlights for each chapter? How about the cool parts of each chapter? The cool parts, the things that are interesting? Like an overview, because people can read, they've read the plan, we assume. You know, they'll say, wow, we didn't realize that, you know, building is now one of our biggest economic drivers in Rangeley. Cause that's a change from the twenty twelve, you know, plan, you know.
I think, I think we need to.
Big ideas, those are just big ideas.
Big ideas.
So Donna, I know this might be some extra work, but I'd really like to see if we can develop. A USA Today version of each chapter, the highlights that we can pass out.
What does that mean?
He means a Reader's Digest version condensed kind of in a pocket guide to the comp plan.
Like, like a PowerPoint.
Well, well, more like, like when you watch, you turn on a sitcom and you're in the fourth episode, you haven't watched the third episode for a couple of weeks. They go, in case you missed, and then kinda do a wrap up. It should be. The highlight, highlight reel of each of the things that we can use that to kinda walk through and people can walk away with that. It's a USA Today version. It's like what I did to school renovation. We did this thing where it was like, where we are, where we're. Where we are, what we're doing, where we're going.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we could do that real simple where it says, comp plan hasn't been done in thirteen years or whatever at this point. This is what the process was that we went through. These are the key changes with each of the chapters that take a look at. There's other things, but these are the highlights. And this is how you can comment back to us on the last page. So it's an eleven by seventeen folded in half, it's four eight and a half by elevens. We got that printed out in color right from here.
I think it's a fifteen or twenty minute talk.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then go to maps, go to map slides.
Yeah, and then.
Points and with, with commentary, it's an hour, like you said.
Yeah, but I think, I want people to walk away with a collateral piece that do go to the meeting with that, that's the highlight reel.
Okay.
Did you pick a time?
Six.
Six, six P M. My guess is we'll be there till at least seven or seven thirty.
If I came up with bullet points, can I send it to you? You can work with me on that to make sure that it's the way you.
Yeah, what I can do is I can also probably, I still have the one that I did for the school and kinda give it. It's, it's designed that if somebody is extremely lazy, they at least look at that and it will combat the disinformation that's out there. Case there isn't.
Well, I mean, that's like.
Not that that ever happens in our team.
To do was to pull out the size of the Rangeley Highlander, but I never did. She never got back to me on that.
Oh, like an insert in the paper?
And yeah, like that size.
Well, you can do a single page insert in those type of newspapers.
Well, the other thing we do.
And print both sides of them.
I don't know what it costs now. It used to cost seven hundred and fifty dollars. I used to be able to drop that eight and a half, that eleven by seventeen fold in half and then fold in half again. So you have four, four full in half by elevens and drop it in every mailbox. Because there are people that are taxpayers that, that are not in the thing and it, and it gets to everybody that way. Even if half of them end up in the trash, there's nobody can say they didn't get it.
Okay, okay.
I don't know if you guys agree with that, if you think it's overkill.
Seems like a lot of paper. I think you could get, I think you could get what you need across with less bulk, probably.
Well, it would give people that information upfront and announce the meeting, I'm just saying.
They may see that. What if they see that, decide they don't have to come, cause here I got everything I need.
Great, then we get it approved quicker. We know what we're doing.
I guess so. That's the objective, right?
Right, well, the objective is to get this thing set so we can go to the state and not walk into a big entitlement.
Right.
At this point.
Yeah, and we're in good shape with that.
It really just comes down to question of public trust. They feel that this group of people that have worked on this has provided a document that makes sense. If there's a question of public trust, then we'll just read about it on Facebook.
Oh, good.
Okay. Okay, so.
How do you know that?
So I will, uh, get these updated off to.
Alright, well, let's circle back one thing. Are we not really on consensus in what we want to do? I, I personally think we should do a mailing rather than just a highlighter. Nobody reads. Oh, who's that?
Oh, it's so cute.
That's Miles.
So is anyone opposed to that idea? I, I feel like if we can put something in everybody's mailbox and there's no bullshit of. We don't get the information. Because I always get that every time. I didn't know about this. I didn't hear about this. You knocked it over the head twenty times.
You hear that from everybody in every town everywhere.
Right. So I'm just saying, we could check the box with that and it's, and it's not that much money. You send the PDF of that with it all set to go, they drop it, goes in every mailbox, we covered it, it goes out in June. With all the summer residents are here, everybody sees it.
I don't have a problem with a mailer. I mean, I just, I guess, I'm trying to visualize a big giant, like eleven by seventeen thing.
No, it's.
Well, I know, four pages.
It's four pages. You'd be surprised how little you could get. It means one, two, three, four.
That's four, yeah.
And on there, half of it can be, half of it's your post office crap here on the bottom here and the other half.
Yeah.
You've only got three pages, really? Something to think about.
Alright.
We can table it till next meeting.
You have a template?
Yeah, I gotta work on content and then, um.
I can send you what I did. I think I got the one I did for the school board years ago.
I mean, if you need help designing it, I can help you with that.
The designer bit and.
Wendy, you and I can talk about it.
Yeah.
We can do a template. I, I, it doesn't have to be rocket science. I did it in InDesign.
I've got tons of, I mean.
See, see, that's the thing. If you did it in InDesign, does a really nice job on that. I don't have InDesign.
I don't anymore. I used to have it at the mountains. That's how I did the trail maps, so. But I mean, you can, the technology which existed in two thousand and ten on InDesign now exists almost on Canva. It's amazing what you can do now. So I think we could whip something up even on Canva that does the job. So Wendy's.
Yeah, I can, I can help.
Doesn't have to be complicated. I think the first thing we just kinda do, we take a little clip of the intro that.
Pictures.
Chris's written picture and just say, here's the history of the comp plan, one of the things we find important. These were the meetings we had and this is what people were concerned about. This is what we've done and please come to the meeting and we'll. I think it's, it's more of an advertisement to show up to the meeting.
Yeah, right.
It's a PR. Do you want, do you want me to like take a stab at flushing one out?